Any items from the public? Nobody here, all righty. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for May the 30th, 2024.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, any questions for Tracy? Anybody good there? Internal budget revisions, Mr. Wine?
I don't think there are any.
Oh, it says one.
Yeah, there's one.
Tracy had fun with all those voter...
The sheriff had one.
I'm sorry, it is for the sheriff, I thought it got pushed to next week. So the sheriff, again, as we get to the end of the fiscal year, trying to keep things tight in account 708, he's asking that you approve transferring $600 from materials and supplies to uniforms, and the funds are there to do so.
Okay. Change in status, a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for Melissa Moore, Mason slash Butler, as a part-time summer help with an hourly rate of $15 an hour effective June 3rd, 2024. New hire recommendation received from Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator for Michael Tucker, as a custodial services manager with an annual salary of $50,676. That's effective June 17th, 2024.
There is also a job, and that would be your way ahead for that?
Just for reference. Oh, just for reference, okay. I have a change in status received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director for Tammy Hawkins. She is going from DRC Community Service Specialist to DRC Drug Screening Tech. Her salary will change from $53,831 to $45,000 effective June 10th, 2024. Letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Department for Thaddeus Wright, Thaddeus Wright, effective June 1st, 2024. And that's all the changes. And we have a... everyone was present, so we can leave the minutes in there. And brings us to a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a motion from someone?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Nothing here from the assessor. Correction of assessment logs, board and meeting reports, Mr. Boyd.
The CVB meeting was canceled until next month. The roundhouse, we've been having ongoing text threads, as I had discussed previous, about the upcoming Sportsman Show. Things are moving along well there, vendors are getting on board, we're getting things put together, progress as well with that. That's about all I have to report.
Okay. Mr. Bernhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a Burke County Public Service Water District meeting, it was kind of interesting. Number one, they approved the budget for next year. Expenses are $20,539,674. I mean, the income is $22,659,080, and the expenses are $20,539,674. So they have a budget surplus of around $2 million. So that's pretty good.
10%?
Yeah.
It looks very good.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but they reviewed...
Don't take long to go through that, though.
They reviewed the bids received for the Bunker Hill plant, and so they noticed, they issued a notice of intent to award, to orders construction to the tune of $55,992,000. So there goes your $2 million, real quick.
Where's all the $53 come from?
Loans, grants, that kind of stuff. And then they discussed, this is quite a discussion, but Procter &amp; Gamble wants to increase their product line, evidently. And of course, they would love to get more softer water delivered to them. Well, the only way to deliver softer water is river water from the river plant, and so they discussed what's the best way to do that, if at all feasible. You know, is it run a direct line from the river plant to Tabor Station? Is it run a direct line from Grapevine Road to Tabor Station, you know, with, of course, a new water tower? And, you know, so they've got the engineer, they're going to have the engineering company look into it, and maybe report back to them sometime in June. And of course, the figures are anywhere from $10 million to $100 million.
I would say $100 million would come from the water plant.
How would they even get that there, down the middle of the interstate?
Well, that's one of the ideas, avenues, and how big.
And who pays for that? Procter &amp; Gamble or Water Company?
Yeah, no, Procter &amp; Gamble, no. The water plant, Water Company has to pay for it.
Would they get a special bill?
That's one of the aspects, yeah. But that was, that was quite a discussion.
Lively?
Well, one sided.
One sided, okay. Mr. Catlett?
Yes, sir. Did you say their total budget was 22 million or something?
Yeah, 22 million.
That's just the revenue, yeah.
Yeah, the income is $22,659,000.
As a sewer budget's around 30 million now, so...
Yeah. Almost getting as big as our budget, get the damn coast.
Add the two together and they are.
Yeah.
Our ambulance authority board meeting last Thursday, after Thursday evening, was canceled. But I did, and I didn't have any other board meetings since then, but I did have a conference call, a virtual call yesterday. What's today? Did I do that yesterday? I think it was.
Yesterday, it was Wednesday.
It was a call with Richard Lewis, the attorney in Charleston, regarding the new statewide stormwater MS4 permit. I told him he just ruined a good weekend, long holiday weekend. But anyway, the big concern, and there's a period there where you have time to respond to it. So Richard Lewis is going to, he's got to present a comment letter to the DEP by June 21st, which he will do, but he's interested in getting some more feedback from our stormwater district, of course, our county as well, our county commission and staff. Gary was not able to sit in on the call, Chad did, and we had Jeff, Jeff sat in on it, Anthony couldn't make it. But the difficulty is this, the one big change is going to be this, and the EPA has their hands all over this new permit, is that they're going to, that their hope is that they'll have this thing in place before the end of this calendar year, okay? And once they do, then everybody that currently has a permit will have to re-register through this statewide permit, and then follow those guidelines. The good news is, we will be able to change the boundaries and all, and change, you know, take back Creek Valley out of the growth area, out of the area, so...
They're a benign area.
Right. The bad news is that in addition to having a new plan, we're going to have to have a separate plan, and they're going to call it the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan. And apparently, a year after this permit is officially put in place, we'll have one more year, we'll have one more year to present to them a separate plan for how we're going to... it's going to be a five-year plan that is, is supposed to show them how we're either going to hold the pollutants into Chesapeake Bay at a neutral level, where we're not increasing the pollutants, or show them how we're going to reduce the pollutants going into Chesapeake Bay, so...
We should be in pretty good shape with that.
Whether it's going to, the restrictions are still unclear, how more difficult it is going to be, and we talked a lot about new development in particular. I raised a question about existing developments, and that didn't seem to be an issue at this point, but for new developments, there's going to be a lot more restrictions on what they're going to have to do in order to get these things approved on the stormwater phase of this. So it's going to be interesting, and who's going to bear those costs, the developer or the county, obviously, it comes into play. My concern is this, is that you have a development, but once it's released to the HOA, the HOAs sometimes don't maintain these stormwater areas properly, so...
I assume that means stormwater treatment and all that kind of...
Yeah. So it's going to be interesting. The feel was for Richard Lewis, and I really respect his opinion, he seems to be very, obviously, very sharp guy, and up to snuff on all this stuff. It's probably going to happen, there's going to be an MS4 statewide permit, and then, you know, we'll live under our existing permit until then. He doesn't think we should relinquish that at any time soon, we should hang on to that until it actually comes to a point where, you know, we have the new permit in place before we do. Because you never know. I mean, depending on how the election goes in November, the EPA could all of a sudden be less stringent. But there's a lot, a lot to come, but I think the thing to do is, Gary has a copy of it, our staff, I think our attorney should look at it, I think Brian Ross and his staff, Doug should look at it. I think y'all should take time, and if you have any concerns at all, then now's the time to formulate, we need to formulate a response. We can send it to Richard, and if we have any concerns or thoughts at all, we need to portray those to him, and then I guess he would be the one that's going to present our formal response to the DEP. All I can tell you is, I can assure you that the EPA has their, has their hands on top of this tremendously, so we'll see how it goes, but...
If I'm wrong, I thought we established Chesapeake Bay watershed control measures years ago for here. I mean, that was part of the cleanup process that the sewer board had to do for some of their plants, and tertiary treatment or the pretreatment before it was discharged. So we should be okay on most of that, I would think.
And some of the scuttlebutt that came out, we've been hearing is that, are we going to have to start treating stormwater? You know, the plan now is you build a holding area, and it holds the storm... You know, the plan now is you build a holding area, and it holds the stormwater until it usually evaporates or dissipates. And keep it dissipates, and you keep it on the property. So how is that polluting the Potomac River or in the Chesapeake Bay, for goodness sakes? But, you know, if you have to start treating it, I mean, you don't want, can you imagine trying to run stormwater through the sewer treatment process?
No.
Even though we get a little bit of that now from leaks and things, but it's just, I don't know. Obviously, someone like me, it's an overkill, but...
I wonder if they're more concerned with like parking lot runoff and the oils and stuff that's in a parking lot as it goes into the collection area and then it releases out of that.
Talk mostly about development on farms and orchards and things where, you know, fertilization over the years, and of course, in orchards, you have the arsenic and stuff, and so it's all, and of course, it's already been taking place, a lot of development here.
One of the big pollutants now is microplastics. They're everywhere. And medicines. That's another item that's a concern for EPA. And those are tough to regulate.
It's going to be very interesting, and I think it's going to be stricter than it was before. You know, does that mean we're going to have to raise fees and hire more staff to do the work? I don't know, you know? Our choices, you know, and then, of course, I guess initially, when they set it up, it was through the sewer, and sewer, because Curtis works for both the storm district and the sewer district. With the new permit, though, as we agreed back a year ago, almost a joint co-permittees with the sewer district, and that'll probably pull the, with the storm district, that'll pull the sewer part out of it in Chesapeake. Any other option the county would have would be to create our own stormwater department like the city has, and then just eliminate totally the stormwater district. I don't know that you'd want to do that, but that, that's an option, so... Did you pick up anything, Chad, that you wanted to add from the call? I think I covered most of it, but none of it was good news in my mind. But it, well, the good news is the fact that they're getting it done finally. But I understand part of the delay now. I think most of it was the EPA and not the DEP, West D and D P, why it took so long to get to this point. It's coming, and we're going to have to deal with it, so, you know, it's just part of government, running government, so... Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Let the record show Eddie, 9:40 couple. Eddie, you're just in time.
Yeah, very good. I had a construction meeting with the Dunn Building this week. Things are, things are winding down. There's finally a light at the end of the tunnel.
Hopefully, it's not a train.
And it is not, an oncoming train. They're doing punch-out work in the ambulance area right now. Furniture will be arriving on Monday. Cafeteria doing floor patching, paint work next week. Deeds and documents framing, drywall painting next week. And the assessors, the old area of the assessors demo will be over the next two weeks. Windows in that area will be next Thursday. Daving in the parking lot will be mid-June. Was unable to attend the day report construction meeting because of a safety meeting on the school safety committee, and that meeting ran a little bit longer. But working with all the principals involved as far as the school system, law enforcement, emergency management, all these folks, and trying to help develop safety plans for the schools, so... Taking care of me last couple days.
Very good.
Is the situation with the electric situation over there still the same at the day report?
Yes, sir. Not resolved yet.
I do not have any meetings to attend or report on, and we have a board and commission vacancies, any, anything anybody want to do there? Nope? Okay. Anybody? Okay. Have reappointment packets received from Robert Nahathy, Matthew Howard, and Ronnie Goode for Berkeley County Museum Commission. Their term expires on June 30th, 2024. Reappointment packet received from Donna Van Meter, Sandy Hamilton, Guy Avi III, and Jennifer Smith for the Eastern Panhandle Region 9, and their term expires on June 30th, 2024. Reappointment packet received from Michelle Atha for the Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority. Her term expires on June 30th, 2024, so...
I'll address those in the future.
Oh, giddokey. 10 o'clock, Mr. Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator, Emergency Communications, rank structure. And I see you have Jen with you.
I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have Director Swisher with me. We're going to brief you together on the proposed changes we have for you this morning. So about two months ago, a long-tenured employee with the ECC had to retire with emergency who was their terminal agency coordinator. Following this retirement, Jen, Gary, and myself got together and discussed how we'd like to move forward with that, what worked best for the center. And Jen had suggested the possibility of not directly retiring that position, but instead of rescusing those duties out. But we came up with a plan to get those duties down to existing staff. We rewrote some job descriptions. We got together, there was formerly, and still one of the books, was an assistant director position, which has not been filled in quite some time. And Jen will give you a little more information here in a second about how that rank structure's going to affect emergency communications. But the plan in front of you is to create, or to bring back the assistant director to take what right now is the assistant director, work that position into a records facilitator or the terminal agency coordinator slash... Will be combined. One of the senior telecommunicators is also involving some of those duties backup. And then the assistant director will be coming in and taking over duties that Deputy Director Paula Wilson used to do. Paula will move up to larger administrative role and be less... Utilizing the salary of the position that's not being filled, we were able to redistribute funds amongst all the staff. And we're also able to, Gary and myself have been talking for quite a while as to how we get the emergency director position to places equitable within the organization, consistent with all other directors' responsibilities. And we believe this is an excellent opportunity. These changes actually, if approved, net you a $23,170,000 budget. Fringe benefits that come along with that salary are not being distributed. And we didn't quite use the... But I will allow Jen to elaborate a bit on what the changes to emergency communications mean.
A little bit more. Maybe yes, I see. I do not have records to click on. Fuck of the... I don't know. I don't know. I'm on this track. It will... We'll take one off. Alleviating that much. Look a little bit better. They really... Assistant Director, how do you...
Pushing up.
Yes, so they're going to, they're going to, she's going to check on the role of... Where that helps us is she has seats as well as she can be... All of our supervisors off giving them...
Internally, what our directors, I think the director pay puts us very competitive. I think when you get down to assistant director, a lot of different... It's not always an apple and apples. But on overall leadership, especially not just amongst others, but also...
Well, I hate to lose Jen to some other agency because the salary...
I know where she lives, it's not happening. I'll go get her.
Mr. Barnhart, I can tell you that the 88-550 that she was at, she was substantially below...
Yeah, I can see that, yeah.
Anybody in this particular region for that particular job. That's a tough job. That's a, that's a 24/7 operation. There are a lot of different agencies that depend on us, not only locally, but even federally, so...
And the whole county depends on it.
Even, even beyond...
Beyond our county lines.
So, you know, I'm glad that you guys were able to work this out and stay within the budget that we have already for the center. You know, it's good to have that rank structure in place, and as, as people, you know, retire or move up, or opportunities come, you know, for other people to grow within the agency is, is healthy also. So I thank you for the work that you've done to get us to that point.
How many employees do you have in communications?
Thirty-seven. So Jen is probably the, the second department head managing people, right? And the internal equity for her personally was messed up, and Chad made it very clear in there that Jen didn't ask for anything, right? She came in and said, hey, I'd like to make these changes. She was willing to get Paula even closer to her, right? So the growth and the demand in that place is astronomical, and Vice President Gokunara said it well, it's 24/7. I had to yell at Jen a couple of times recently because she was on vacation, and I kept getting responses to tech, or to emails, I'm like, quit, this was just a placeholder. So you are very lucky to have her on your team, and she's not going anywhere, I promise you. And her, her team supports her. And Mr. Barnhart, to your point or to your question, all of these agencies, it doesn't matter how far out you reach, you have to be very careful with their title, because I can tell you Jen does a lot more than director work. Her deputy director does, her deputy director until, and if you approve this, was also their, their training person. So Paula wore two hats, Jen wears 13 hats, Angela wore three or four hats. So when you start looking at comparisons, you really only can, can come down to the telecommunicator and look at what that looks like. Once you get into administration, we've learned that the title really sometimes doesn't suit the role and their compensation. You have to be careful with that.
That goes to say within a lot of organizations, because, you know, there, any organization that has anything to do with the public, there's always an avenue, or there's always another path that has to be looked at that you never think about during the normal course of a business day.
I have a question. With the next generation, when we adopt that, would that create more headaches and more work, or will it hopefully alleviate some of the pressure?
Really, what it fixes is the service provider to us for purposes of communication. Jen and her team won't even know it happened.
So it's on the tech end of it?
It is on the tech end, yes, sir. Not that Jen isn't excited for it, right, Jen?
I'm very excited for it. It gives us other opportunities to do that.
And that again is going to affect July 1?
January 1.
January.
Cutting edge.
The absolute cutting edge.
Cutting edge.
So we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. President, I would like to move that the, we implement these rank structure changes for the Emergency Communications Center effective July 1st, 2024, as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your staff and all they do for this community.
She had nice tie, by the way.
All righty, we're a little bit early here. We're going to take a quick break, so...
That tie blends in with his outfit. He's styling today, man. That tie blends in with his outfit. He's styling today, man.
All righty, we're back in session and we have Elaine Bartleson, Executive Director.
Oh, Gary Wine.
I'm sorry, I skipped one, sorry. Gary Wine, County Administrator, Bid Award for the Health Department.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President.
I saw the break and, sorry.
I wasn't worried about time, but Bill Kearney may need to have things to do.
They have things.
So, as the Commission is aware, you advertised and went out to bid for an addition at 122 Waverly Corp. for the Health Department. This project is probably about two, two and a half years old. God bless Bill and his efforts for coming to the table and working with the Commission. And there was a design that came in with a proposed construction budget that just wasn't, we just couldn't get there with the monies available. So Bill sat back down with the architects and the engineers and came up with a solution, if you'll remember. He met with everybody and it's a reduced footprint that serves purpose and I think fixes the current demands for what they need at the Health Department. So, we went to bid and the bids went out and you received three. Those three, and I'll read them from highest to lowest, came in. Callis Construction was $2,324,800, which was $581.20 per square foot. W. Harley Miller was $2,060,000, which was $515 per square foot. And then Lance Construction came in at $1,997,000, which is $499.25 a square foot. All of the bid packages were submitted to Crabtree and Red Bull. They've been reviewed by the engineers and architects. And the low bid from Lance Construction does meet specifications. The funding source is available for this. If you'll recall, the Health Department sent you a check for $750,000 that we created a building fund for. And currently, as we said here today, there is $552,943.34 in it. You have available to you, not much longer than today, a grant from the state for $608,000. If you'll remember when Mr. Kearns stood here, the Health Department offered another $500,000 for the project. So, your current funding in cash is $1,660,943.34. That leaves $336,056.66 unfunded, if you choose to accept the low bid today.
Okay. $55.52, was that ARPA money?
No, that's savings by the frugality of the Health Department and the good management over there. They, Bill and his team do a good job at keeping a fat savings account. Mr. Barnhart will let you know that every once in a while. So, if the Commission wants to move forward, we're at a $336,000 deficit.
I think that moving forward would be a good thing. Is there any call sharing in that last little bit of the $336,000 that'd be available?
Well, I probably have a really good compelling argument.
I know.
And yes, the funds we had, we were able to save up over years since we moved into Waverly. As you remember, we put up a hundred and a half million dollars for that purchase.
Correct.
And, so we have saved, but it's due to lack of staff. We've just been told we're probably going to get a close to a quarter million dollar reduction in our state aid funds now, coming through years on. So we do have some, you know, what we have available will also be utilized for some other purchases that would not come under the counties that we would not expect the county to pay, such as building out inside of this desk, file cabinets, all these things for this additional square footage that we're building for the future, as well as paying for, and Mr. Wine has always gave us a great break on purchasing things like security cameras and things of that nature. So, we could try, you know, but we also did give that three quarters of a million dollars start off with. A good bit of that money, I don't want to say was not utilized well, but we had to start over.
Right.
Because we went from a two-story building down to what we could actually, and we built for even further in the future, to what we have now.
Right.
Which is really good plans. And our driving force is that we want to get this moving. We don't want to lose that $600,000, I believe, $8,000 that we have awarded to us. We need to get some ground scratched. So, we're willing to work with you, as you know, we always have. But we also are seeing some reductions in our annual funds for next year coming in as well, so.
Mr. Wine, do you think there's a call sharing amount that we could budgeting on that?
So, I can tell you with your current commitment to construction projects that your funding for construction is tight. There is opportunity, we could use some coal severance funds to offset some of these costs. I'm not sure I would be comfortable with saying, yes, you could cover the additional One note that I didn't say that's in here in yellow, in the yellow line, is Bill, one of the reasons for this is, one of the things that the Health Department struggles with is they don't have an alternate power source. So in the event of power failure, which we all see, and remember, they have drugs, they have the things that they do over there, we won't talk about.
Vaccines.
Vaccines. But, they have frozen things that have to be shipped to Charleston. He wants a generator, he needs a generator. The design of this building will have the pad port and the switchgear in place, but it's missing a $146,000 generator installed. So, we talked about searching for grants and things like that, so, Bill, I'm not sure I can offer him $336,000, sir.
Mr. Wine, do you think there's an opportunity with the coal severance to split the difference with the Health Department, so that we don't lose that $608,000 and lose the opportunity?
I'm comfortable with $170,000 of coal severance money.
That's about 50%?
It's a little more than 50%.
Okay. And I've been authorized by my Board of Health to be able to do that as well. We will have to look at funds to be able to pay for, as I talked about, the security cameras and things of that nature, but I feel the county would work well with us on that, but I have been authorized by the Board to be able to prove that as well.
It's like that generator, Bill, we've identified that need, I know, for probably seven years.
Absolutely.
And I don't understand why we've not been able to capitalize on that piece of equipment, you know, through these training exercises that is designed to show weaknesses.
I personally feel that if we made a good case for some congressional dollars, that this is definitely a possibility. I've seen this in work for some of our neighboring counties in their health departments, that they're getting congressional dollars to pay for building enhancements. So I think we definitely could do that. We need to have that whole facility generator for good reason.
Have another suggestion.
We right now have a residential one that we would utilize to keep a couple plugs going.
Right.
But it would not keep us operational.
And it's not automatic.
No, sir. No, I have to get it out of the building, I have to start it up.
And continue to feed it gas.
Absolutely.
I have another suggestion on that. With the money that we're spending to put this building up, I would ask you to send a letter to the Governor's Office. His contingency fund now has money in it and they're awarding money that, I'm hearing he's going to spend most of or all of it before he leaves office at the end of the year. And I think this would be a very viable request to pay for that generator from his contingency fund, particularly with how much money is being used to put the structure up, so.
I would definitely certainly be willing to do that.
And then we could write a support letter as a Commission towards that, to support that effort, to get that funding, and then I'll also reach out to our senators, state senators, to support it as well. And I would think it would be something they would certainly support.
But just full disclosure, as I mentioned about our budgets being reduced from the state level, from what we're looking at for fiscal year 2025, to where what we planned, to what was approved, is a $230,000 reduction just for the Berkeley-Morgan County Board of Health. $230,000.
How do they justify that?
They removed money at the eleventh hour, and then they put it, they put the funds, wait, over the state, $4 million. They've put it now back into a contingency fund that the Secretary of DHHR has the authority to plan how that's going to be utilized, but from what I received this morning, notification, that may not be put back into our budgets for the Health Department.
But if it is, then you'll go through that agency and request those additional funds, correct?
Yes, but right now, from what I'm hearing, there's not a real good chance. So, we're reverting back to fiscal year 2023 funds that's coming to the Health Department. So, I agree with you, sir.
I wouldn't even go further to say this, I think you should ask for about a half a million, which would include the generator plus the balance here of $336,000. And then if it doesn't come through, you know you got the $336 covered, but if it does, then we keep our money and you keep your difference as well, so.
And I think looking at.
With this kind of match of 1.6 million, I don't think it's an unfair request to ask for another half a million dollars, so.
I agree with you. The Department has contributed a good bit of money, but at the end of the day, the building remains the property of the Commission.
Right, right.
It's good real estate.
This is the kind of projects that they're looking for.
Bill, if I could offer Rachel Snavely, the Region Nine, they just helped us in another request, I would suggest a conversation with her before we send it down.
We will, we will work on this, that's for sure, just trying to get the, just to go ahead and get this on through.
If the Commission doesn't choose to move forward today, you will lose the $608,000.
There is a deadline.
Well, today isn't the deadline, but today's the deadline for your execution, for we can meet the next deadline date. If you don't choose to do this today, the project won't.
It's on a tight timeline, dirt has to be moving real soon.
It has been, yeah. Okay.
But you're good.
I'm good with half of that.
50% of that.
Okay. I'm authorized to offer the other half.
All righty. Can I have a motion that we will go ahead and proceed with the Health Department building project to also include the additional half of the $336,056, 66?
And authorize the President to signature on the contract with Lance Construction.
Let me sign that.
Mr. President, I'll be glad to make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got two of them. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sound opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
And whatever that paper is, I'll sign it, because it's coming up.
They'll be ordered, now we let Lance Construction know and.
And we'll proceed then?
Correct.
Okay.
They'll have to get to your lawyers next.
All righty. Alrighty, that's taken care of, next up, Ms. Bartleson.
Now.
And Mr. Mollinex.
And Mr. Mollinex, good to see you all. Look at that. Pretty pictures. Show and tell, yeah.
Good morning. I'm going to take this opportunity to update you on our building project because we're very excited that after almost, well, ten years, nine plus years, this is coming to fruition. So, on, oh my gosh, I'm blanking on the date.
June twenty, May the tenth.
May tenth, we opened up our bids for this project.
The entire project or?
Yep, the entire project. We do have all twenty million dollars for the project, but through three separate grants, federal grants.
Yuvana, I can tell.
EPTA did acquire the property at Race and Rally for this project. So that is the funding that we, as an agency, have put in for this project. So June tenth, we did open three qualifying bids. A low bidder was identified. At our June seventeenth board meeting, our board will vote to approve the recommended construction for, for this project. June nineteenth, our hope is to issue the notice to proceed. And we will be hosting the groundbreaking, which you will all receive notice of, on June twenty-sixth at two thirty, two o'clock in the afternoon. So this project has been a lot of hard work. I asked Matt to stand here because without Matt and the MPO, we wouldn't be here. Hands down, we would not be here. And this is more his project, well, just as much his project as it is EPTA's project. But through this project, we're going to build a new admin facility. We'll have a bus transfer facility, which will move us out of the... We'll have a fueling station, we'll have an improved maintenance facility, a drive-through bus wash, and our storage, bus storage facility that will hold thirty-seven vehicles. So there's room to grow, there will be eight spots for electric vehicles in the future. The...
Buses. EV buses. Four EV chargers on site.
Right, I think I was getting to that.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's all right, no, no.
Be quiet, Vanna.
So in the, in the community parking lot, visitor parking lot, we will have EV chargers for personal vehicles as well. So this campus sits on almost four acres. It doubles what we have right now and looking to grow transit in Berkeley County.
Are you going to tear down the old Southern States building and...
It's, it's all going, they're leveling it.
No, it's just, it's going to be incredible because, and out to EPTA's site, you know, how cramped it is in the admin, you know, the buses are parked outside and the elements, going to be able to extend the useful lives of all their facilities, whether, whether on wheels or not, the rolling stock. This, as Elaine says, we see federal grants, purchase of the property at four twelve, serve as local, one of those. Full credits for the other one, the last grant that we just got was twenty-three million, it's a hundred percent federal share. So Elaine and myself, our team's been able to do is get about twenty million dollars and nineteen million dollars in federal funds for about one million dollars out of that.
Does this give you room for expansion?
It does, it does.
Because I love to see you head towards Morgan County would be a...
Well, that's a state issue, I, I know, and Morgan County comes up all a lot, a lot with us. But we are, we're considered a small urban agency and because of Morgan's population, they're still rural. And you can't mix the two.
Difference between fifty-three oh seven and fifty-three eleven. What Elaine gives, she gets. Maybe opportunities, but never mind.
So my state director will be here for the groundbreaking, so come on over and talk to Bill.
That's true, that's true. There'd be a lot of opportunities for, for handshaking and getting some ideas on it, right?
But you know, the most important thing about this project is it brings our facility downtown to where the ridership is. So right now, if someone wants access to us, we have to bus them out or we have to pick them up, we have to bring them out. Now, we're walkable to them, they can catch the bus, get to us. Every bus will depart from here and bring people back here, so, and connect Jefferson County.
So what do you anticipate as for the completion date?
So the end of December twenty twenty-five. So I'm hoping...
Year and a half.
Yeah, once, once the, the G C is announced. Demos can start on the building, ratings can start on the site, and... Yep, so if you're in a mobility aid device, if you're in a wheelchair, motorized wheelchair, now you can go down Route eleven and try and go back and drive. In addition to the Camperston Station, there's three other transfer points that are qualified as well. Ones in front of caves.
Yeah.
At the VA.
And down in Charleston.
So all that will be everything.
Wonderful, very good.
It's twenty-six, two o'clock, eyes on your mother.
Got it right here.
Any questions about the project?
I know it's been a long time coming and a lot of smiles on the faces the other day at the board meeting, so, very good.
You know, a lot of ups and downs, but we got here and... You know, but we...
This will be a great addition to the City of Martinsburg.
Yeah, it'll be a great improvement. For Martinsburg, so.
You're going to drop down Raleigh Street and see this thing, like...
City of Martinsburg.
If we can just get rid of that four-way stop there, it will be...
Elaine's building's in the way of what could have been around about.
Yeah.
Well, hold, hold that.
Well, actually, Elaine, this is an older render.
This is an older render, we have pushed this building back fifteen feet to allow the city to...
Modify.
The city's talking to the state about realigning the offset.
And that, that was the most recent.
One suggestion I would have with the city is where they have a turn lane at a four-way intersection, all cars have to stop, you really don't need a turn lane designated for left or right or straight. That, I mean, that can narrow the...
We brought that up with the state, so Race and Rally are both state roads.
Okay.
So that's working with Burlington and Charleston.
Good luck.
Yeah, but part of this project, and I should have brought this up, is the, the dirt alley that runs there is an unnamed alley. So we are bringing that up to code. So it will be A P A compliant, it will be up to code for stormwater management. So that will really enhance that neighborhood.
So the, the, but, where do the buses go?
So that's a great point, so the buses, bus traffic is actually separated.
I'll hold it and go.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, so, so passenger vehicles, plate parking, plate parking is, right, deliveries coming back off of this ending now, which we're upgrading. And all the buses that enter and exit off of Raleigh Street.
Oh, okay.
Which is controlled access by the state, so it's very hard to break, but right by the... Buses and vehicular traffic are separated.
Oh, okay.
Unless something really goes wrong, we're not going to be meeting.
How, would that be controlled, Matt, with the gates or something that they have access to or?
Yeah, so there's gates on this part, on the bus part.
Yeah.
So this can be secured, there's, there's a kind of variance from the city for the whole site. Transfer, maintenance, all of that.
Will they put a light there where the buses come in and out?
No, not right now, but the state has, I'm sorry, I'm on a hotel. The state has pulled out the possibility in the future of a, of a traffic signal.
Yeah, so they, when we did the traffic impact study, they actually said that the, that the traffic from the, the traffic signal, so...
I just know that backs up sometimes, at certain times of day, I didn't know if buses would be able to make a left out of there.
Well, all the buses won't be exiting and entering at the same time because of the crowd schedule. So the most buses you would have coming out would probably be four around the moonish. So thankfully, it's not, it doesn't operate like a nine to five or something.
There was good visibility in both directions.
Well, no, there is, it's just that line backs up.
Right at the four-way stop.
Yeah. What time did you say that groundbreaking is?
Uh, two o'clock, Wednesday, June twenty.
And you will all get... Yeah, you will all get an email with the information on it. And I am, we are utilizing at a great savings to us Berkeley County I T for a lot of the, all the security and I T work. So I appreciate the county for that because our A and E firm was shocked when Gary gave them the estimate, budget. And so I was really, I am always grateful for Gary and, well, now Chase in the team, but Gary has always been wonderful to...
About a half a million dollar savings just for the...
And the bid did come in under...
Thanks to all that teamwork.
Yeah, correct.
That gas valve.
What was great about it?
Seal those suckers, but, yeah.
From being on the MPO, one of the great things was that no one wanted to be president, so Elaine felt obligated since she's getting all this money to serve as our president.
True, but you know, and to speak to the Health Department, one of the big things we are, is we are putting in a emergency generator. And that was part of this project, so I hope, I'm very happy that... When we go down, we go down.
Well, that's another part of the, the new admin building, you don't have a, a, any person at the, they can't get all their employees in the same room right now, that's all. Or the sheriff's office, I guess is where you go, yeah.
We utilize the sheriff's office, so that is true. So a state-of-the-air training room that needs it is more than welcome to use it. And I do want the community to use that, that's what we're...
Very good. Great addition, and I know the city has invested over the last several years on handicap access, really across the entire city.
Corners, intersections, crosswalks.
That plays right into...
Worked well with the city, they actually, I mean, going way back, back to twenty seventeen, they actually had some extra ground funds, ground field funds, wanting clearance, you know, on, on the whole property before our person.
And I mentioned, I mentioned before, this is also going to be a, a good asset to have also with the linear park. That's, that's going to go through from Frog Hollow all the way on through, so, give good access to vehicular...
Right up here. Right over there.
Yep.
Is this the only copy of the picture that you have?
Um, right now, I mean, I have the street side of it, but I can email this up to the...
Well, I would love to have it posted in, in the building here.
I'd put it on the board out here, if you want to send me the PDFs, we'll get it done.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, that would be great to, to be displayed here.
We'll put the ribbon cutting, the groundbreaking and everything.
Sure.
Up there with it, the dates and times.
And we're going to get China bus, because you're going to be asked to park off-site and send them to us.
We've got plenty of parking here, so this would be a good spot.
And the buses are air-conditioned, correct?
They are.
Steven Penny will go now, yeah.
We're sitting on a lot of invites, so, going back to the Health Department conversation, ideas to talk to folks about, and maybe some of the folks...
Very good.
Be prime, right?
We shall.
All right, thank you very much.
There we go.
Thank you all.
Well, that takes care of that, but Elaine, you're still going to be here as a candidate for Region Nine for an interview?
Yeah.
She's so excited about that project, she forgot about volunteering. My question is, is what can you add to what we already know?
Well, you know, I try not to sit on a whole lot of boards because my time is really focused at transit, but that's probably the one area that I can help Region Nine with is the transit component of, of, you know, our whole area, right? So, and I love to be part of the growth of Berkeley County, this region, the whole eastern region.
Very good.
I may be a New York girl from birth, but this is my home now, so I love to see all the great things we're doing here.
Love to have you here. H D, have any questions that, or Jim, or anybody?
Well, of course, I'm chairman of Region Nine Planning and Development Council. And I think you could add a lot. The next meeting is June tenth, I think. So if the rest of the county commission doesn't mind, I would like to make a motion to appoint Elaine Bartleson to Region Nine Planning and Development Council as we speak.
You're not going to back out now since he's the president.
I will not.
I just wanted to...
I'm only present for a short time, Mr. Callan, so.
I just have one more question before we...
Oh, no, go ahead.
So you're a New York girl, are you a Yankee fan?
Oh, heck no, I, I'm Western New York, I'm, I'm the Snow Belt.
Okay. You're a Buffalo Bills fan? You're a Buffalo Bills fan, for sure. Every now and then, she shows up with these wonderful cookies.
Oh, yeah.
Black and white cookies or?
No, no.
They're, they're from a bakery back home and they're called, there's two different, there's pink stripe and there's curbstone. But when, Lucille Ball is from Jamestown, New York.
Okay.
And she would, these were her favorite cookies, she would always have them sent to me. And so I generally, when I go home, I bring a bunch back.
Yet they never filter down to here, have they?
Yes, they have, I, I've had the pleasure of sampling them and I highly recommend them when she brings them.
Yeah, so, I'll go, I'll, next time I go, I'll bring you back some.
And you think good enough for Lucy is good enough for me.
Eddie, you got anything to say?
I don't, I would like to second your motion.
There we go, have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, you have to go to county clerk's office to be sworn in.
Tracy has to go first.
Yeah, but there'll be a letter coming out.
Go see Tracy.
And we'll notify Region Nine that you're, so they'll get you any court support.
I, I'm not sure that the commission has actually won with that Louis Grindel, but he is the deputy director for us and he's coming up on his year anniversary, so I'm thrilled and I'm not sure. So he has been, was diagnosed with cancer right around Thanksgiving. So the last six months, I've been pulled in a lot of different directions and we did stay in Baltimore, a lot of the streets. So Louis has been fabulous, held up together and going, and I am so grateful for this feeling.
Well, I can second those accolades, it's always been a pleasure to come in and see him there with you all.
If you need anything, he's around if he's...
Call Louis. If we can't get ahold of Elaine, we'll call Louis. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, you're on your way over.
I'm all for it, yeah.
Tracy, get a letter.
Alrighty, well, we're right, believe it or not, we're right on time, but Nick's not, so.
Yeah, as I'm saying, Nick's not here.
He's out here.
Is he out there?
Oh.
There he is.
There he is, come on in, Nick, we're almost ready for the sheriff too, so. We're going to, we're going to do Nick here real quick.
All right.
Don't even sit down.
Come on up, Nick. Nick, you are a candidate for Region Nine, did you know that?
What?
You're here for an interview.
Back to the scene of the crime.
Back to the scene of the crime at Region Nine, so.
That's right.
We're here to ask you some really hard, tough questions to make sure that, you know, you're suitable for the Region Nine board. And I'm going to start off with H D Boyd, and or not unless you want to tell us a little bit about yourself since the last time we talked to you that we don't know.
Well, I'm a little less stressed now because we're not managing a charter service, but other than that...
I can understand that stress relief, so.
Plug it along.
H D, have any questions for Nick for Region Nine, I mean, he's... See, I see you served there in the past, so I guess you're familiar with the job or the board, what goes on there?
And the only thing, just, just to be transparent about is they are my tenant. That's the only thing that I see that would be any kind of a conflict of interest. So anything doing with their lease or, or if they want to file a complaint with their landlord, I would have to recuse myself.
Hasn't really come out.
But, yeah, other than that, I was, I served on their board for, I think, three or four years.
As economic development.
Right, right, when I was back in economic development days. And it's, I'm, I'm relatively familiar with, with Region Nine P D C. I've worked, I've been working with them... I've worked, I've been working with them for fifteen years, so I know, I know most of what, of what they're doing now, I know kinda what they can do for us. Um, I'm very supportive of the organization, but, uh, would be, uh, would be honored to, to serve, uh, the, you know, the pleasure of the county commission if you guys so choose.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you. Of course, I'm chairman of Region Nine Planning and Development Council, and, uh, and of course, being a tri-county agency and the smallest of the regional councils and all this kinda stuff, we're really working hard to make it bigger and expand it because the workload that they endure there is rather significant.
Yeah, it's, you know, having, being around the corner from them, I know that they, they have a lot on their plates.
And, uh, I would welcome, and again, this is a repeat of which I just did, and, well, I'll let Steve and Eddie talk before I make the motion.
That'd be nice of you.
Well, I, I really wanna be forthcoming, yeah.
And as I said to Elaine, him being president doesn't discourage you from serving now, does it?
No, no, we're good.
Since I disapproved Elaine and took care of public transportation on the ground, we might as well cover the airways, too, is my thought.
Get them all.
That's right.
And, uh, obviously, I don't, he'd be a good fit, obviously, so.
Eddie?
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
And, uh, I know you'll bring a lot to the table, especially with your, your background and your connections that you have. I think it'd be a perfect fit.
Thank you.
Nick, I don't have any questions other than, you know, like I've said to, to many volunteers that, that make this community what it is, and, um, it's, sometimes it's thankless and, and, but we appreciate everything that you do.
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to appoint Nick Deal. I don't know if this is an unexpired term or a full term, I'm not sure of that, but.
We'll make that.
Well, we'll determine what it is, but I'd like to appoint him to Region Nine Planning and Development Council. We have a meeting June tenth, I think. Which is at the airport, funny, funny about that.
Yep, yep, yep. Let me just confirm here.
June the tenth is on a Monday.
Yeah.
I hate to say this for our first meeting, but I'm gonna be at a conference.
Well, I'm just telling you.
Okay, I wonder if they got a Zoom option?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I can Zoom in.
Um, I'm, like, like you say, make a motion to appoint him to Region Nine Planning and Development Council.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have to be, of course, sworn in by county clerk.
We're usually sworn at, but you gotta be sworn.
Yeah, I had that yesterday, so we're good. All right, thank you all very much.
Oh, it's already ready?
All right, I'm over there.
She's quick over here.
You are quick.
Thank you, Nick.
Have a good one.
By golly, we're getting close to the end. Sheriff, good to see you here this morning. We got a staffing request.
Morning, Rob.
Good morning.
Chief, chief, chief.
Chief, chief, chief.
Did you, did you hand these out? County Administrator. This is a rank structure.
Need my glasses for this.
That we, um, presented to the Civil Service Commission. Uh, they approved, I think on May twenty-second. Not a detailed, I have a more detailed, um, list of, of, uh, responsibilities and, and whatnot that each, each position holds, but that's just kind of a flow chart, you can see where we're going. As a county administrator, some of you all know, before I, I took office, there was a, a move towards, uh, a different rank structure and expanding our agency, and there's a vision for a hundred and forty deputies here in Berkeley County that, in the future, obviously that's not gonna happen.
This budget cycle.
Probably the next, I'll probably be, um, long gone before we see that, but, uh, that's at least, that's at least a vision, you know, that, that we have, and I think it's good to have vision in life, uh, especially in law enforcement, because you can't stay stagnant. We're, we're obviously a county that's blowing up. I mean, you guys deal with every facet of that, and, uh, we're dealing with it in, in the, in the area of crime and mental hygiene's and, um, you know, it's just, uh, there's a lot of responsibilities with this office, but, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna read some of the notes I had here to explain what my position, since my appointment, I've heavily examined many facets of the sheriff's department with a strong dedication to seeing, uh, where we are currently and the projection of where not only myself, but the members of the command staff feel we need to be. We've looked heavily at our rank structure, as you can look on the, you know, provided you there. Uh, we have already begun a concentrated effort to increase the first-line supervisor training, uh, and that we give in the early ranks, our, our first-line supervisors. Uh, we saw that they needed some, some training in that area, so we've, we've already started that process, and we're gonna continue to do that. The duties associated with many positions within our current structure have been reviewed and realigned to bolster the department as a whole. It is our belief that this will give our deputies the proper resources and collaboration needed to be successful. There's been a focus on where the community needs, demand our attention, and how we can meet those needs. We have put together a strong plan, we believe. These stages will require strong experience and a knowledgeable foundation. I'm requesting approved additional funding, uh, to the current budgeted command structure to include Chief Eric Burnett, um, at the chief salary outlined on our department, um, pay scale. Having had the opportunity the last four months to review the current and future manpower rank structure plans of the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department to work with both Chief Burnett and Chief Young overseeing the many administrative and law enforcement duties and responsibilities that the sheriff's office requires and will require in the future. To evaluate the real need for better oversight, it is evident maintaining both chief's positions is essential in continuing, uh, successful and improved operations of Berkeley County Sheriff's Department. The addition of Chief Burnett advances the experience and knowledge of the agency as a whole, ensuring, uh, the efficient and effective operations and oversight long needed at the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department. Both Chief Burnett and Chief Young are working cooperative in the day-to-day operations of the sheriff's department, and towards the future manpower expansion, as I said, a hundred and forty is the vision when I came in on the board that we have, and we're gonna work towards that, hopefully, uh, and we obviously know that that's gonna take some funding, uh, crack a hundred and forty-eight, no. These clearly defined positions are tremendously, tremendously assisted in the manpower rank structure model planned for the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department. This enhanced leadership structure will additionally allow a more efficient and hands-on oversight in the hiring, training, and development of the current and future inexperienced officers. Lastly, the addition of Chief Burnett will be an overall asset to the current and future command staff of the department, uh, members in general. And my hopes are, you've seen, since I've been here, uh, four months now, you've seen a, a little bit of a change in, in how the department's been operated. We're very focused on professionalism and holding people accountable. That was my, um, very first thing, I spoke to every deputy that we have, accountability, self-accountability, because if we can get to that level, um, you know, we'll, we'll have a, the best department in this, in the state of West Virginia.
I think we already do.
Well, thank you. Thank you, I believe that myself, but we can always improve. But, um, that's, that's my request, and, uh, if you have any questions, I brought both, uh, both along to answer any questions you may have, or I can answer.
Well.
Well, yeah, my thing is, um. We didn't stay at status quo. You know, you've recognized a need for change, and working through the county administrator, we've identified how we can do that. So, as your department continues to grow, and we need to make it grow as well as our fire service, uh, and all emergency services, EMS, our dispatch center, all, all those things need to grow as we continue, but, you know, I've had conversation, you know, with your staff and, as well as with you, but with your staff, and, uh, I, I think you've, I think you've got a lot of problems of the past, perhaps challenges of the past sheriffs. You've identified the need, uh, for this additional command staff, and to me, that's the only way of being successful, and we want you to be successful, we, you know, that's what we want, because when you're successful, so are your deputies, and, and then ultimately so is the community.
Yes.
So, I, I applaud you for doing something different and identifying those challenges and finding a solution to them.
What would you hope to implement it?
Talking about, uh.
Adoption of this.
Chief Burnett, or the, the adoption of the, the total.
The total.
The, the manpower thing's gonna be something we're gonna work towards.
Yeah.
Contingent upon, you know, proper funding and, um, you know, however that comes about, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to grow.
When we were first asked to start working on it.
Five-year projection.
Yeah, and I.
He's also a comedian on.
He's undercover.
If you're gonna be a comedian here, you need to make fun of Barnhart.
Everyone else.
I like Barnhart's tie.
Yeah, I think that, that everybody understands. I think everybody understands, uh, the necessity of growing these services for protection and well-being. I think also, everybody understands the necessity of having those funds, and we collectively will need to work on that ability, uh, working with our legislature to try and find that additional funding for growing counties, so, um, hopefully we'll, you know, have that support as well as we move forward together to be able to accomplish your goals.
As much as you have on your plate, which is a lot, um, instead of us just meeting with our legislators as a commission, I think we need to get yourself, I think we need to get our fire chief and those people involved with those meetings as well.
Yes, sir.
So, they understand the impact that this growth is having on particularly your, your departments when it comes to public safety, and that's how we, we're gonna sell this thing to the state to get the help we need. I mean, you have, obviously, the support here to do anything you need, but we have to have the funds to be able to provide that, and that's, that's gonna be the key to it all, so.
And we all very much appreciate the support that you all have, have given us. We see that, and we don't take that for granted. Appreciate county administrator. Any, anytime we have an issue, we can go straight to him, and, um, really appreciate the support, uh, from the entire commission.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead. With the, with the change of, of the structure here, is, is, how much additional in the budget this year, starting now, is there?
It's the chief.
Chief salary.
If I could, Mr. Boyd, ju- just for point of clarification, your chief deputy of staff would be a civilian position carried in your service of process budget. I'm assuming that's the intent. That's not your intent.
There's, 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 um, a couple other avenues, either High County, Harrison County have. Two positions, actually, Canola County at one time had three.
I tried getting information from them on exactly they were doing, how we got it. They. High County.
Is that?
Again, like, it, it's not spelled out here, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, just like, the addition would start July first, correct? Is that when, is that when one term ends?
Hundred and fifty-one thousand and thirty-five dollars.
And that would be the difference for this year that wasn't appropriated in the budget, correct?
The ask for the position, if the chief is, if the salary compensation package is identical to the chief with the nicer hair, it's a hundred and fifty-one thousand, thirty-five dollars. That's what they're asking for.
Okay.
And the one deputy that was approved in the budget.
The contingency officer.
Yes, sir. Those funds.
That was applied to. That was a discussion, that's for discussion right here.
Not that we're taking one away, we're just trying to figure out our funding for the, the chief deputy position as far as.
Contingency position.
The contingent position.
So, you were, you were recently given Officer Number sixty-eight. Uh, that compensation, total compensation is seventy-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and I think there was some casual conversation, if, if you were willing to compromise and meet the commission halfway, if you could eliminate Officer sixty-eight to create the chief position.
I think we had discussed, you know, we're, we're definitely, we, we need more manpower, and that's, that's, um, we're, the, the, I guess, the hiring process, that's another thing that I was gonna mention, we're, we're putting a very strong focus on, on, uh, recruitment, because we're having a difficult time identifying people, I mean, and there are, um, to apply for our department qualified people, so, um, I, um, I wanna retain as many positions as I can in moving forward to grow our department, because like, you know, you don't get the hundred and forty.
Are declining.
Yes. That's, uh.
And we're looking for funding, you know, we're pressing hard with the legislation and things, you know, but it just, you know, this one year.
Yes, sir.
Till we can try to identify some of that, that's, well, I think where we're trying to be at, because the budget's already been done.
Yes, sir.
I would say, with, with the appointment of, of your new chief would be much more valuable to you than a single deputy. So, if I had the choice between the two, and I think that's kinda where we're at, I would hope that.
And, and, and moving forward, obviously, we're gonna request additional positions.
Absolutely, and we'll absolutely support that.
Yeah.
We have to have the funding to be.
I think that's clear.
Yes.
I think if we can get to, to this, uh, maneuver, that we'll get the, the additional chief deputy financed through the current budget, if we can meet that halfway mark, then I don't think that'd be a problem. Just to be clear, that means you will go from sixty-seven deputies to sixty, or sixty-eight deputies to sixty-seven, and then the new chief's position could be created.
Temporarily. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get more, we're gonna get more deputies in the future.
Oh, you will definitely get more.
Well, it would be a question. There's no temporary to that decision, that's permanent.
For the short term.
Everybody understands.
Yes, sir.
I think we'll understand that.
Yes, sir.
So, that, so, that's, that's a seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-six commitment to next year's budget.
Right.
That we will have to reduce the very slim contingency amount you had by that amount to balance the budget. If they eliminate one officer to create the new chief.
The one contingency officer.
That's eliminating officer, it's not an area of work.
We took it out of contingency and put it on.
Right, but it, but it's, it's not eliminate somebody who's already in a job, it's eliminate a, a, a spot that's not filled.
There's no.
Correct.
Well, I believe you have seven positions right now? How many have, open?
Well.
It's a bunch, isn't it?
We just had one resign.
I think, so they, yeah.
I think it's at least seven.
So, you're not talking about a human, Mr. Boyd, you're only talking.
That's, I just want public to, to know.
We're definitely.
That we're not slashing somebody to add somebody, that it's actually a position that's not filled at the time that we're removing for this year, at least for the time being this year.
So, this, this is a twofold, uh, motion. One is to fund the, um, chief deputy position, uh, contingent, from the contingent position that was approved. Does that make sense?
You don't have to worry about the word amnesty, they have it. They have sixty-eight positions.
And then the one we're removing to create this chief deputy position.
That is correct.
As well as adopting, adopting the structure, ranking structure. So, you want two motions or one? Two motions. Okay, the first one would be to, um, um, create the, the chief deputy position and removing one of the.
No, just, just, yeah. I'll make the motion to, um, add the new structure to the sheriff's department, adding a new, uh, chief deputy of field operations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Now the second motion, right?
Was it, excuse me, was it, did I misspeak? Was it chief of staff or chiefs of?
Chief deputy of staff.
Field operations? Chief of staff.
You just created the chief deputy of staff, that's what you just.
Well, I misspoke there because I said, I said a field operation, so could you correct that to me?
Okay. Okay, we have that. Now we need to adopt, or should adopt the rank and structure. Have a motion to adopt the new rank and structure for the sheriff's office.
No move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries.
And that rank structure is years away. They're, they're starting to build and work.
But I think we, I think it's good to have it so we know what we're working towards and what we can plan on, so.
And on the funding aspect, I'm constantly reaching out to our, our legislators and, um, having conversations about the need for that and where we need to go as far as.
And I think, uh, Commissioner Catlett kinda struck pretty good that if and when we have a legislative summit again, including the sheriff's office, well, I think we have before, and, um, fire, to let them know, let our legislators know what we're faced against on a daily basis that we're trying to remedy.
It would be nice if we could get some data to show just how many situations we have here in Berkeley County compared to other counties in the state, you know? How many arrests do we have, how many incarcerations we have, blah, 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 blah. And this is what, you know, and compare it to some of the other larger counties in the state to say, hey, we need some help, people.
Yeah, in comparison to the county and municipalities, because here we have the one municipality and other places, we're similar population, but they got fourteen municipalities.
Canola County.
So they got, yeah, they got fifteen departments, we got two.
Right, absolutely. And one percent sales tax would facilitate.
Facilitate everything.
Yeah.
Does that motion need to add to our deputy sixty-eight?
Deputy number sixty-eight just got removed.
Yeah, no, that was in.
It should have been in that verbiage.
Yes.
Removed deputy sixty-eight is gone.
But does it need to be in the motion that you made?
Yes.
Yes.
Need to modify your motion to create the chief deputy of staff and remove number sixty.
One, yep.
Is that okay, HD?
Yeah.
Do we have that amended motion, Mr. Barnhart?
Yep, second.
To reaffirm the, the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, we got it.
And, and we do have a deputy graduating, uh, next Friday, the seventh, on June, deputy Leek will be graduating coming up, hitting the road. Uh, we have two that we just hired. Um, one's not in academy yet, one won't start till the fall, so we're making inroads in that and we, we'll be back requesting more deputies for sure.
We'll be here listening.
And we appreciate your support.
We'll do all we can.
Yes, sir.
All righty, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we need a legal session here.
Executive session for pending legal matters, please.
Need a motion to go into executive session pending legal matters.
No move.
Have a motion to have a second? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. We are in executive session.
Okay, we're out of executive session and there's no action to be taken. And I am looking here for any items from the public.